Order the special meeting of the Fall River School Committee, August 28th, Cuss Middle School. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia.
Here.
Mr. Costa.
Here.
Mr. Harp.
Here.
Mr. Hetzel.
Here.
Mr. Corey.
Here.
Ms. Lawery.
Here.
Mayor Coogan.
Here. Sloop to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recording or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present, and are deemed to be acknowledged and permissible. Citizens input?
There's no one signed up.
Committee of the whole, discussion and vote to approve spending $1 million in CARES Act money, elementary and secondary emergency relief fund on school transportation, as presented by Dr. Matthew Malone, Superintendent of Schools.
Tonight we're here, I appreciate folks getting together, but one of the things that I've been fortunate enough to be part of is the ecosystem that we live in, that's the city of Fall River. And I think sometimes when people don't sit in seats like this, they don't really understand the connectivity between and amongst agencies. And I think one of the great strengths of this city is that we continue to work together in the best interest of the entire city, not so much my yard versus your yard. And in that spirit, I know that we're all facing some tough, tough financial situations. But if one side of the city is forced to make reductions and cuts, it affects all sides of the city. So in that vein, we in the school department governed by the school committee earn receipt of $4 million of CARES Act money that's unexpended and unallocated, meaning it's not set up for a present expense, we are holding it in abeyance. And what I would propose to the committee tonight is that we use a portion of that money to help transportation costs, therefore providing the city a savings of a million dollars to be used in their budget needs. We would hold the remainder of the $3 million of CARES Act money in abeyance, and I know that there's future expenses, of course, that will be used for, but I've built our entire FY19 budget 100% on operating dollars, there is no one-time dollars in that budget. So it is a fiscally sound budget, it's solid, and that this money, unexpended additional money that is sitting there for a future purpose, I think, could be better purpose at the present time to meet the needs of the entire city. So with that, I take any questions that members of the committee-
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion, Kev?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. The, I'm trying to figure out exactly how we got here today with this particular piece. So, to the mayor, did you request, Mr. Mayor, did you request this money from anyone? Did you request this allotment of money from anybody?
I'm not sure. I don't think I requested it. We had a discussion about transportation, and there was, in the CARES Act, which we were trying to find to use for the city side, where we're sitting on 7.9 million, the school department did not have the same constrictions, so we talked to them about if they wanted to help the city.
Yep. The reason why I ask is, I'm here today at 5:00 on a Friday, a special meeting, the only person I spoke to any of this about is the vice chairman. Haven't spoke to yourself, haven't spoke to the superintendent, so it seems like as if, and in my comments to the vice chairman, was about, let's make this maybe a secondary thing, to try to figure out with the city budget, so it's not necessarily jumping, not that I don't want to support it, but that I'm wondering why we're here first, and the city council hasn't even done their budget piece yet. And that's confusing to me in some way, just because I think the, we were just here Monday, on the 24th, at a meeting, to pass the 100% budget. At the 100% budget that we talked about, it was stated by the school administration that we were going to keep the $4 million in abeyance for expenses that could come up during the year, it's basically like the school department's stabilization fund of 4 million. At that time, we already knew what these constraints were on the city. The city was in a tough budget situation, so between Monday and today, something changed, or something was worked out ahead of time, or I'm not really exactly sure. But it's a little troubling to me just to not figure out exactly what, and not be part of discussions with you, Mr. Mayor, on the city side, or superintendent.
Point of information, can I share some information, if I may? I know you have the floor, I just-
Sure, if you want to share that information, I still got the floor, but go ahead.
Sure, no, no, just as a point of information, so right after the meeting we had on Monday, the regular scheduled meeting, where it was discussed, and Mr. Almeida informed the committee that we were going to be funded at 98% of that school spending, I had asked for a meeting with the chairperson, superintendent, Mr. Almeida, and Ms. Sahadi, to explain that not funding the school department at 100% of that school spending violates the spirit of the law. And it was during that conversation that the topic of funding and where the funding would come from, in order to meet net school spending would come from. And so it was around that time where we were discussing CARES money, and what restrictions may or may not be on there. And so that's where, so when you ask, where did this start? It started because when I was a part of that discussion, in my mind, I kept thinking, well, if there's no restrictions on CARES money for transportation, that's something, depending on how things go with the council and their budget deliberations, we may be able to partner with them and assist them, and the city administration, get through a budget process that's a very difficult one, with the services that we all want, police, fire, DPW, City Hall, Government Center. And so it was in my mind at that time, that there may be, that may be a suggestion. And so as the budget played out, I watched the council, we went to the joint meeting, we talked about finances, and there was some talk about net school spending at that point, and that was at that time that the administration informed the council, I think just prior to that, that they were going to meet their obligation. So the discussion about, or preliminary thoughts and discussions about CARES money was part of a discussion, just in overall city finances, in terms of me, as the vice chairman, advocating for 100% of that school spending, so that we didn't go into this budget season at 98%, because obviously, as you know, Mr. Agia, they would have had to make that up. So that's where the discussion came from. After the joint meeting, it became evident that the budget, you know, may have the ability to pass, it went to the council, I watched that council meeting, and it was at that time that they weren't happy that they weren't filled positions, the number they were discussing, I think, was $1.4 million, they took a vote to send it back to the mayor. It was at that time I called and spoke to the mayor, and I spoke to the superintendent, Ms. Almeida, and asked them if they could look into whether or not the CARES money that we had, one, if we were okay with the expenditures that we needed to make, and that we were fiscally stable enough that if a proposal came before this committee to expend $1 million to offset the transportation costs on the city side, that they then could take that money and fill that void for public safety. And so after that, I, you know, in terms of, was it promised? There was no promises, there was certainly a follow-up meeting, just so things are clear, the council president was there, and Ms. Sahadi, myself, the mayor, and we kicked around the thought of, if we brought it to this committee, you know, would it be something that could help with their budget? And council president was there, he heard what our intentions would be if, but again, no promises were made, because obviously, this is something that needs to come before the body, and it needs to be discussion and a vote before anything can happen, but, so that's sort of, I guess, you know, sort of a chronology of events, why we're here today, because if the committee doesn't take any action on this transfer of money, then it leaves the council with a balance, with a budget right now that may not be balanced unless they make some other decisions. So if the committee approves this tonight, it'll give the council clear, you know, concrete information that this committee and this school department are on board with helping them get through a very difficult budget, it's one-time money. You know, I know they were talking about transportation, but, and I'm going to give the floor back to you, Mr. Agia, because I think I've provided the information I think you may have been asking for, so I'll yield and certainly ask for the floor if there are any additional comments. With that, I yield, Mr. Chairman.
So the, so when the money that we have for the 4 million is basically, would be like the school department's stabilization account, so if we take a million dollars of that off, that's obviously a million dollars that we won't have any, you know, through the year or towards the end of the year. But what is the city's position on what are they going to use this money for?
Public safety.
I'm not talking about the transportation, so-
No, public safety.
It's just going to be for public safety?
Public safety.
So I watched the council meeting, as chairman did, vice chairman did, and from what I watched, it looked like as if there was an issue with the healthcare, and the council voted to actually take the money, reduce the 1.4 million or thereabouts, from the healthcare line, and fund the public safety positions. Has that, any information been gleaned on that?
We're still working on that, again, that's something that if it comes true, and we're able to do it, we're going to replace that money into stabilization. As you know, when you reduce healthcare, or you increase healthcare, it's not a fixed cost, it can go up and down, God forbid, we have a rough year, we've had some good years lately, because, one of the years this year is because of COVID partially, people weren't going to the hospital and doctor, but next year, we have an extremely bad year, we'll go recoup that healthcare money right out of stabilization that we need to pay our bills. Because right now, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of resources, and obviously, taking the 3.5 million out of stabilization was a last resort, and I'd love to start replenishing that today.
Yep, so, I mean, it sounds to me like as if you're saying that the healthcare was, they found money in the healthcare line?
Well, it's not found, it's, you're playing with the numbers, yeah.
Were they over budget?
We're looking at different ways we can try to reduce it, we have other work to do, too.
Were they over budget in the healthcare?
I don't believe it's over budgeting, I just believe it's ways you trim stuff. Any, every dollar that's in that budget is designated to something, now, if there's things we can do to reduce costs on one end, or someone retires, or we don't fill a position, I don't really call it over budgeting, I call it looking for money that we can use.
So is, let me be more pointed, is there a $1.5 million savings in the healthcare line, after Mrs. Sahadi, after the city council meeting, went to Gallagher and talked to them? Is there a $1.5 million available?
Well, she was meeting with Gallagher at 3:00 today, and then not talked to her.
Is there, or is there not, $1.5 million available in the healthcare?
I heard a little less than that, Kev, I heard a little less than that.
Is there 1.4 million?
I heard, yeah, that would be the number I heard.
1.4 million, right, which is the number that we need for public safety?
Well, actually, it's not that much.
Roughly, roughly, I mean-
No, it's not going to be that much, because there's no openings in the police academy until January, so that money is going to be, obviously, it was like 1.4 million, so we get to reduce it, because they're going in at the half year.
Right. So it's pretty clear to me that the city is in a, definitely in a budget struggle. I'm concerned, as I stated at the joint meeting, and I think everyone should be concerned about next year and the budget, and also about spending one-time monies out of stabilization to fund your operating budget in the schools or the city. Now thankfully, the schools didn't have to do that, but in essence, the city budget, assuming it stays as is, is taking $3.5 million from the stabilization account to fund operating expenses, which is not necessarily a real advisable type of situation. So I'm hearing what you're saying, and I'm trying to read through what you said a little bit, I would personally be much more comfortable in sharing our good fortune of having a stabilization account of 4 million, that if we did reduce the, this transportation by $1 million, that we also amend this motion, so that $1 million would be reduced from the amount needed from stabilization, which is what you just basically said you would like to do. So if we give you this, right now, this seems like there's been no agreement on what, other than the transportation number's going to be lower. The issue that you have is you tried to get to 100% of net school spending, and in order to do that, you had to take 3.5 million from stabilization. I think we all agree on that, correct? Is the reason why you took 3.5, because of that? So in order to get to net school spending, you had to, you had to take 3.5?
Just a point of information, you wouldn't be able to use the CARES money to replenish the stabilization, has to be a qualifying expense, which is transportation.
Correct.
So we'd have to give it to them for transportation, if they chose to take the 1 million from transportation, put it in free cash, I mean, excuse me, stabilization, that's an administrative decision, but-
Correct.
We couldn't just take the CARES money and put it in stabilization.
No, I agree.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, if we took this vote to say that we're going to, we're going to fund the $1 million in transportation out of the CARES money, at the same time, if we amend the motion, that the mayor will then reduce the amount taken out, which was 3.5 million, to get to 100% of that school spending, and put it at 2.5. It's not, that would allow us to be able to vote on this, not knowing we're adding to the structural deficit, it's going to replenish the money in the stabilization account, and I think the healthcare piece that we just talked about is enough to cover the public safety. I think it makes a lot of sense that that's the way we should go about having a better sense of where we're going to spend the money. If we don't know where we're going to spend it, we're only going to keep exacerbating the problem, and it's going to get worse the following year. I yield.
Josh, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's great that we have this opportunity to pay for some of the city's school expenses that are not net school spending eligible, so I think it's wonderful that we can give the city a million dollars for that expense, and to be quite honest, I don't care why the city spends the money, because they need it right now. And then, that's it, it doesn't matter to me, you know, you've got to do what you've got to do, tough times. I yield, thank you.
Mr. Costa?
No, I'll just say that, you know, I think in terms of the cleanest way, I guess, if you will, is the way it's presented. It's a grant fund, the ESA grant, that allows for transportation, city's exposed $11 million in this year's budget for transportation, it's not net school spending eligible, this million offsets their expense for 1 million, which frees up that million dollars, it just so happens they have a $1.4 million need, and some of that's made up by public safety and probably some other departments as well, but my opinion, only my opinion, when you start to look at health insurance, and you start to adjust what you've projected is going to be your expense, no knock to Ms. Sahadi, but we know her track record with that, just look at how we've been projected on the school side, and how much money the cities had to give us. So, again, no knock on her, she's going on a projection she gets from Blue Cross Blue Shield, and Miss LaFlash, and, but I'm just saying that, it sounds like the council was giving her, my understanding, a suggestion, because I don't know that the council can order the administration to change a line, they can vote to not approve the budget, but I don't know that they can direct her to reduce health insurance, but I think it was on that ask that she went back and looked, and I think, I don't want to say, speak for her, but I think if she had her druthers, she probably would leave health insurance alone, and use the million dollars from the schools to reduce her transportation, and at least take care of that piece. Now whether or not she has to make some other adjustments in health to get to the difference, well, I don't know, she may feel more comfortable doing that, because it's roughly $400,000 as opposed to 1.4 million. And the last point I'll make on health insurance is, we all know that if the city reduces their exposure by 1.4, and claims actually increase, they're going to be right back to looking at free cash, or stabilization to make up that difference. And so they're not going to have to do that if this committee approves the CARES money, because it's going to be a one-time expenditure of a million dollars, it's going to offset transportation, they'll have that $1 million one time, and it's not, you know, ideal, it creates structural deficits, we all agree on that. And we all know that this is a very difficult budget season, given COVID and the city's ability to raise revenues, and that's why we've had to dip into the stabilization account for this very reason, and some districts have dipped into their stabilization accounts for this purpose. So, you know, there are many different options, I guess, but I think this one signals that we know that the city is out on the hook for school transportation for 11 million, that number's increasingly gotten higher and higher, we haven't had the ability to assist them in years past, because it's a non-net school spending eligible line, this gives us that opportunity and that flexibility, and I think, you know, I've said it before, you know, we're all in this together, I think it makes good sense to partner with all entities across the city, and, you know, I hope the council, you know, can work with us on this, and the administration, so that, it sounds like the budget dilemmas that they had about vacant positions, this, I think, pretty much could solve that issue. And so I don't know that there's much more that, you know, to discuss with the overall budget, but I'll leave that to the council to do their deliberations and their diligence on it, but I think this is a good faith gesture, it's eligible, and I think it speaks to, it ends sort of the conversation that I've been critical of over the years, where it's been, well, the school department always gets net school spending, and as a result, we have to take away from other city services, well, and that's true, and I explain that's because we have a law that requires that the city spend X amount of dollars on education, and I would never advocate for them to spend a penny less. But now that they've committed to that, we're in a good position financially, I've confirmed that with Mr. Almeida and the superintendent, I think all of us know that, we also know there's potential for reopening money of $225 per student, which could equal $2.25 million, that we haven't received yet, or have received confirmation as to whether or not we'll receive that. So we would still have 3 million in CARES money set aside, plus potentially reopening money, plus the city, depending on the end-of-year report, could be anywhere from $800,000 to $1 million in FY20. I would just say that, right now, it looks like the school department's in pretty good shape, and I don't foresee students or teachers in the district going without in this fiscal year, and if we continue, and, you know, want to thank Mr. Almeida publicly, because as CFO, I think he's made some suggestions through the superintendent, that's put things before this committee for us to decide on, it's put us in a good situation financially. And as a result, I think we're able to have this conversation, and so I'm sure he'll continue to do that when it comes to FY22, and how can we maneuver ourselves from '21 to '22, so we're in a good position financially. So I hope my colleagues support it, I really do think it's a good opportunity for us to partner to restore city services and move this budget along, and to the extent that the school department can help, we've done it in the past, this committee's taken votes to take on SROs, to reduce the exposure for police, we've taken on capital projects that might otherwise be funded by the city, but because of situation we found ourselves in, we've paid for some of those capital improvements within our buildings. I think we have a track record of being good stewards with money, and helping out when we can, and I think this goes to speak further about that, and I hope it gains unanimous approval. With that, I yield.
Kev?
So the, talking about the projects, as Mr. Costa just said, we were also told that there's going to be no further projects funded by the city? Can anyone enlighten on that?
They are on hold right now.
So moving forward to-
We plan on doing a supplemental budget in October, and if our CARES money becomes less restricted, like the schools, we'll be able to do some different things.
So, but at present, we're not looking for funding of, is it just the Watson? Is that the only one that's in the-
That's the main one, I believe.
That's the only one in the current cycle, phase two of Watson.
Is there any others that are pressing? Like, wait, I know you sent us a whole bunch of-
Yeah, I gave you the three-year plan. In terms of pressing, no, we're finishing the, I mean, just so everyone's clear, we're doing five projects at once right now, it's just a big deal in Fall River, we haven't done that in years, so we got to finish those, and then there'd be a next phase of things that we would consider. But in terms of pressing, no, because we fixed the three neediest with the MSBA projects, finishing Watson two, which is the accessibility part, would be the first priority of the next group.
I'm concerned a little about, and I've mentioned this before, about the Durfee project at the end of baseball field, finishing up those things, that I'm concerned about that as we go forward.
Right, we know about the baseball, but it's not part of the project, so if there was money left over, that would be something that we would take a look at, but there's no-
Right, but if it's not, and everything's on hold, we're not going to be getting any funding-
For baseball?
Yeah, for the, any, to finish the baseball field, or the fields, or anything like that, right now, that's not in the-
No, but we haven't asked for any yet either, so I mean, in terms of, like, if you asked me what the priorities were, finish Watson, do work on the Nagel wing, if you will, because remember, we take that over once we tear the rest of the building down, and then the fields would be, would be the third, and then after that, there's a set of things, but that's out a couple of years, so-
Yeah, I'm just looking at it for funding wise, so when we're taking a million dollars of money that we could potentially use for those purposes-
We couldn't use that money for fields.
But I'm saying we could replenish the budget with money, save money in the budget, like, there's ways around those items, but it's just we're giving away a little bit of that. The, I just want to go back to the mayor on the healthcare piece, because it's bothering me a little that, to me, I think there's been meetings, I actually got a call from a councilor today, about a meeting that you had with Mary Sahadi and the councilors, yesterday or today, I don't even know, the last couple of days.
Yeah, I've been meeting with all the councilors.
And in those meetings, it was very clear to the council, by the city folks, that they were able to reduce, not just like on a whim, they were able to reduce by 1.4, 1.5 million in the healthcare line, which in essence would take care of the public safety issue that's in the budget. And I know you're being wishy-washy on it, but I've heard this pretty clear, like I-
I'm not being, no, Kevin, I'm not being wishy-washy, what I'm telling you is, healthcare is a moving target, it's never, let's allocate 10, it's, we're not premium-based, we're self-insured, so it does change. If I, if you could guarantee me the amount of money in the healthcare never changes, or is static for a year, that's a different animal, but it changes every year I've been there, every year I've been in the school department, we owe money, we get money back, it changes.
Right, so they budgeted based on what the consultant asked, and the consultant actually came forward and explained whether it was they missed, I don't know if they, I think they over budgeted, it was 17% increase or whatever, but the bottom line is, is there's a $1.5 million savings in the healthcare line from the city side, which is why I'm trying to make the point that if we do give a million to transportation, we should reduce the stabilization draw from 3.5 to 2.5 on the city side.
That's what I said, what I said to you is, if we're able to save, let's say, for example, we use 1.4, 1.5, if we use, if we are able to save that money on the healthcare side, we're going to put it in stabilization, in case, like I'm saying, the fluctuations in healthcare hit us at the end of the year. I'm not going to go out, you know, buy benches, or spend extra money, or increase, you know, people in certain offices, I'm going to try to do the best I can. I think what we're doing is trying to help the city. I'm not going to be frivolous with money, I'm very much conservative with spending. So that money's not going anywhere, we're not going to, you know, buy things, we're going to put it, as you said, in the stabilization fund, use the school department's money that they were kind enough to grant us, to help our public safety issue, and move on. I'm not going to, I'm not looking for expenses right now, I will be doing a supplemental, like I told you, there may be some positions in there, but I better have the money found somewhere else where we're still looking for, to fund those things.
Right, so I think it sounds like you're saying you're agreeing with me.
I am, but we're not going to, I'm going to keep that money aside for healthcare.
In stabilization?
In stabilization.
You're going to replenish the, you're going to go from 3.5 to 2.5?
Well, I'm going to try to put the whole thing over there if I can, 1.4.
I'm saying the million dollars, you're going to-
I'm going to try to put the 1.4 over there.
Into the stabilization account, that's what I'm, I'm trying to get myself to a point where I can feel comfortable that I'm not voting to exacerbate a structural deficit problem on the city side.
You're not, you're not.
So what I want is to try to get some clarity, just, and it sounds like that's what you're saying, is that you're going to replenish by at least $1 million the stabilization account, I think that's what you're saying.
Correct.
So I would like to-
If I say it again, I'll make an album.
I get it.
I'm saying the same thing, Kev.
I think, I really do.
I keep saying, I keep using the 1.4 number, you're using the million.
I'm just saying that, if we agreed to the million that we're transferring, so I'm going to make an amendment, a motion to amend this motion, this vote, so that we reduce by $1 million on the city side, the amount taken from stabilization, which is exactly what you just said, Mr. Mayor, the same exact thing of, I think we're talking the same word.
I don't think so.
No, I don't either. How about- How, how do you not understand?
Anybody second the motion?
So I'll second it. We'll just vote on it.
Call, want to call them?
No, I want to answer the question. Somebody's got a question on why it's not.
It, so, so what you're suggesting is different than the motion that's on the table. You're suggesting we take a million dollars of CARES money.
No.
Okay, so.
The motion on the floor is to take a million dollars in CARES money and reduce the line item in transportation by 1 million dollars.
And then to, and then to put that million in stabilization?
To 10 million.
Yeah.
An amendment that I just made to this motion was that the mayor, when he submits a budget to the city council, is going to reduce the stabilization draw by 1 million dollars. Has nothing about CARES money.
I'm going to.
He just said he agrees with me.
I'm going to do, I said to you again that I'm going to reduce it by more than a million.
I'm just saying at least a million, so.
Well, no, you don't need to, you don't need to make a motion if, if that's the end of the discussion, let's take a vote. I already told you where I'm putting the money. I'm not going to lie to you.
And you don't know you have it, but.
Right, I'm going to find it, but for sure.
So when you go to the council on whatever day you guys are having a meeting.
Monday, Monday.
You're going to reduce the draw on the stabilization from 3.5 to 2.5 at least?
No.
That's what you're telling me today?
No.
We'll see. I mean, I don't, I don't know what you want to do, Kev. You want to have your vote or you want to just?
Well, I'm asking you a question.
I'm not trying to have a debate with you, that you make your motion.
But you just, you just told me that you were going to reduce it.
Kevin.
Either yes or no.
What, what we're going to do is vote on your motion. You ready?
I'm asking you a question, Mr. Chairman.
I vote, I'm not going to say it again. I'm really getting tired, Kev. My intent is to put the money in stabilization, period. I don't know what the final number's going to be, which I started the conversation.
Point of order.
Isn't it Monday?
Point of order. Motion was made, second, let's move on.
That's what I say. Let's vote.
Thank you.
On the amendment?
On the amendment.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
No.
Mr. Harp?
No.
Mr. Hetzel?
I'm staying.
Mr. Corey?
Vote.
Ms. Larrabee?
No.
Mayor Coogan?
Yep. I'm sorry, no. I'm just getting excited because Kevin is, no.
No, the motion on the floor.
On the, on the, go ahead.
I have the floor for a second.
Sure, Josh.
All right. Too much discussion for me.
Yeah.
About public safety. Right? So again, we're going to give a million dollars of transportation. I don't care what the city does with the money and I say that respectfully because I know the city's going to use it wisely. With that being said, because of the discussion, based on where it was going, I'm going to withdraw my second from the original motion and hope, obviously, I'm hoping someone.
I'll second it.
Okay. So amend that motion. Any further discussion? Kevin?
So just so we're clear, like, this isn't a vote about public safety. This vote really has nothing to do with public safety. This vote has to do with us taking a million dollars from school CARES money and giving it to the city and letting the city figure out what they're going to do with their budget. Now, I just had a conversation with the chairman, who also is the mayor, who indicated that he was going to replenish the stabilization account. Why the heck I wouldn't get more people to support that is beyond me. But the bottom line is, if we don't, if the city's not careful with how they're going to fund and what they're going to fund with the million dollars that we're giving them, they're not going to be able to fund net school spending next year. The city owes us a mil, going to owe us probably a million dollars in October, right now, for healthcare, on top of what we're going through here. So by, the motion that I was trying to get passed was so that that money would be sitting in stabilization so that when it came October and they owe us, they could take the money to do it. If, if we don't try to say ahead of time what we're going to do for the funding, we're just basically giving cap launch to the city to say, spend it on whatever you want. And it's, it's not going to help future years of how, of, we can't do this every year. So this is a one-time shot deal. And right now, we're spending the one-time money that we're given on we don't know what.
No. Point of, point of information, Mr. Chairman, to my colleague, we're spending 1 million dollars of CARES money on transportation. We know exactly what we're spending it on.
Yeah.
What the city decides to do when that transportation in their budget gets reduced by a million, whether they put it towards public safety, they put it towards other city services, that'll be up for the administration to decide. But for you to make this, this statement that we don't know what we're expending this money on, we do. It's transportation.
We're spending one-time money on a recurring expense.
On transportation.
Recurring.
Correct. Absolutely, we need transportation every year.
Correct. And what do we think we're going to need next year? We're going to need 10 million or 11, at least?
At least 10 or 11. It's a city expense.
At least 11.
It's a city expense.
So therefore, the city's taking a million dollars and if they don't, if they're not careful with how they go about what they're going to spend it on, we're creating a structural deficit of not only whatever they're taking from stabilization now, we're adding to it.
We are. You're absolutely right. Everybody knows that. That's not a secret. There's no secret that we're creating a structural deficit. Everybody knows that.